I've been told it's now 7:30. I appreciate everyone coming this evening for the city council meeting. If you all please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing, and we'll have the invocation this evening by Pastor Flannoy.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With humble submission, thanking you for your son, Jesus Christ, and his finished work on the cross, we ask you now to give us guidance and protection over our city council, over our mayor, over the assistance. We ask you to look over our police department and our fire department, our first responders. We ask you to bless us and let every decision tonight be pleasing in your sight. And we've left the meeting. Let us find everything that we left just as we left it. We pray that you lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Chairs are kind of rolly. That moves us right along to our first item, which is the citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand and address the city council in an open, public meeting? Please.
Hello, everyone. Jordan Michael, Tyner Mackey, 120 Emerson Avenue, Bonner Springs, Kansas. My senile uncle told me that I was on the agenda tonight, but he didn't realize that 120 North Nettleton is not where I live. So congratulations on the new park, guys. I also mentioned to him that the agenda is online, and I mention that because I wanted to say if I'm going to turn he and I into a spectator sport, or if I'm going to give him grief about whenever he comes in to see you guys, I would really appreciate it if you guys could do your best to try and use your mics or make sure that they're turned on. I've been trying to go through the meetings and Mayor Harrington, and typically where Amber's sitting, I can hear well, but most of you all, you look great while you're up there, but nobody can hear you if you are trying to review the minutes, or not review the minutes, but review the meetings online. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. And by the way, the park looks great now that I know that it's the Centennial Park again with the words on the side. Train looks excellent. Excellent. Thank you all for all you're doing. Appreciate it. Kids, have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to stand and address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move along to the next item is approving the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the June 22 city council meeting, claims for city operations, and the public use request for a bubble run and 5K and phone glow 5K. Anything to be pulled by the staff, citizens, questions from the council? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. So moved by Mr. Shannon, seconded by Mr., I'm sorry, moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Vote, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to new business, the first item of which is a notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. Cities, all taxing jurisdictions except the state are required, this is the third year we've been required, to approve a notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate if we intend to levy one more tax dollar than we did last year.
Than we did last year, or?
Or for this budget year.
But it was the revenue that we received three years ago, isn't it?
No.
No? It's the revenue?
It's the revenue we're receiving that we levied for this year.
Very good.
But this is the third year that we've been required to do this notice of intent of a public hearing if we want to do that. And so we have to notify the county clerk by July 20th if we intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate. The county notified us on June 15th of our valuations, and the revenue neutral rate would be 36.095764 to take us, with our current valuations, to take us to that level tax that we currently have. Our current rate is 41.875887. Staff is proposing to keep that current mill levy rate because we have to publish a rate for the hearing, and then that's the maximum rate that can be approved. And then when we have the hearing, which is proposed to be August 28th, that rate can decrease after the hearing, and there's actually a revenue neutral rate hearing, and then there would also be a budget hearing where you would actually decide what taxes do need to be levied. So for the last two years, and we're recommending again this year, to publish and send to the county to maintain that same mill levy that we have now, and set the hearing for August 28th, and notify the county clerk. Any questions?
The budget hearing will be a separate hearing from the other?
The budget hearing, I think, I tried to print off the calendar, but the internet was out before I came. It's in September. I can't remember.
You don't have to remember the date.
I think it's the first, so this meeting, this would be the August 28th meeting when the revenue neutral rate would be held. Now, these notices go to the county clerk, and the reason they have to be to the clerk by July 20th is because they send those notices that everyone got last year that tell all the proposed rates for each of the jurisdictions, and those go to all of our residents, and then it tells them when our hearing is. And then we hold the hearing on the 28th. We accept any public comment, and then we will, I think we have the scheduled budget hearing on September 10th, and that's another public hearing where the public can come. And I think part of the reason we maintain that is there's still some unknowns in our budget. It gives us a longer time to, we just heard about possible certification increases. We've got, you know, the 138th Street project. I don't know if we'll have it bid by then, but there's still some unknowns in expenses. And so this just gives us that high mark that we're not going to exceed our current mill levy, and we're able to come down after the revenue neutral rate hearing and the budget hearing. And after the budget hearing on the 10th, we have till the end of September to actually set that levy. So there's still another meeting, you know, it just gives us more time to flesh out what we feel the city really needs.
In order to see if there's any other questions or concerns, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Any input from the citizens concerning the notifying the motion to authorize the city staff to notify the county clerk of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, and not more than maintaining a current mill levy rate of 41.875887, and setting a public hearing for August 28, 2023, to hear comments on exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Any public concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
There, I make a motion to authorize the city staff to notify the county clerk of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, maintaining the current mill levy of 41.875887, and set a public hearing for August 28, 2023, to hear comments on exceeding revenue neutral rate.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon. We'll start down here. Any questions or concerns, comments?
Down here.
Does the county fund that mailing of notices again this year? I remember it was a phased approach.
They do this year, but I reached out to them to ask what it would cost for next year, because we would have to pay next year for the 2025 budget as the statute stands now, and she said it'd be about $600, because they split that, I assume, based on population, because the state told me they spent like $50,000. And when she told me 600, I was surprised. So it must just be based on population.
Tilly, did we cover this in our budget planning meeting at all?
The revenue neutral rate?
Right.
I don't know that we've covered it in any of the budget sessions so far. So if you have, I know, if you have any questions.
Yeah, my mind's just everywhere on this.
I mean, the main thing with the revenue neutral rate is if we want to levy one more tax dollar than we got last year, we've got to exceed the revenue neutral rate. And even there's, I mean, most, I don't, there's a handful of cities that don't or haven't in the past, but even those who don't intend to still will pass this and hold a hearing because if, for some reason, the county overestimated our valuations, and in October, the valuations are lower, they actually get less tax dollars.
You interpret a dollar amount, potentially, what it is that we're trying to
Well.
secure or maintain?
With our current mill levy, we would, in our estimated valuations, we would get about 725,000 more than we got this year. And we did go over in the budget, you know, we've got the full-time fire that we're going to next year, and some of the other, a lot of, a lot of next year's fire is probably the main one that sticks out, so.
One of the good examples for me that came out of the budget, and tell me if I'm misstating, please, if we had abided by revenue neutral for budget year 2023, we would have lost out on $265,000 in tax from Old Dominion.
Right.
That was a concrete example. I could wrap my head around.
And the expenses of the increased development on the city would not have been covered. So we don't, we more or less get penalized for that increase in our valuation without being compensated for it right now the way the statute is. So in order for us to hit the revenue neutral rate, we have to lower the mill levy down to 36 point of whatever to get the same number of dollars that we had last year. But our expenses have gone up from last year, a certain amount, not the whole amount, but, so that's why we're doing it.
Very good. Thank you.
And we can always come down from the 41.
Yeah, I mean, you could.
We can't go above it, but we can bring.
Yeah, this just sets a high watermark.
Sure.
So, like, we're gonna have. No. We can't go above it, whatever's set tonight. You can't go above it, but you can definitely, we did that last year. We dropped it after, we went below what we published as the tax levy rate last year when we approved the budget.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Any other questions? Seeing none, vote, please.
Voting on a motion authorizing city staff to notify the county clerk of the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, maintaining the current mill levy rate of 41.875887, and set a public hearing for August 28, 2023, to hear comments on exceeding the revenue neutral rate. McMahon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. The transparency that this state statute has forced upon us, I think, is something, one of the only, if not only, benefit that the citizens receive. This is a redundant notification. Every year that we've done a budget, these notifications go out, but this is an opportunity for another notification of the same information. So I appreciate you going to all this effort. Thank you very much.
One advantage of it, the only advantage to me, is it does extend, if we weren't to exceed the revenue neutral rate, we would have to have our budget published finalized by the end of, by August 25th. And so it does give us a little bit more time to decide, you know, exactly where we want to land.
Very good. Thank you. On to the next item, stormwater master plan update. In a drought.
Good evening. Frank A. Bart, Public Works Director. This particular item was developed in 2019 and approved by council. Looks like it was developed in 2018, approved by council in 2019. We'd like to request an update to the stormwater master plan by adding four items that are listed in the packet information that you have. Two of these are on Kansas Avenue, one is a residential on Emerson Avenue, and one's over in the levy, actually on the industrial park drainage outfall. As you know, we don't have a stormwater fund that is well-funded just yet. These corrective activities will increase our project load by about $952,547, which puts us over $12 million in identified projects eligible for stormwater work. With that, I would entertain any questions on this update request?
Very good. Any other staff input? Citizens' questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the stormwater master plan update.
Second. By Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here, sir.
I was fascinated by the photographs because it helps bring things into our minds. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are we expecting that these total dollars would go up by 25 or 30% much like every other construction project has?
Probably by the time we get to construction phase, yes.
Because that $21,018 is a little frightening.
You're talking, yeah.
Am I being conservative at 25 or 30%?
Depends on how much money we raise on the stormwater stuff.
I think I may have answered my own question in my mind, but I noticed the two culverts under Kansas Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
And those are separated, which at first I thought would make sense to do them both at the same time, but then I'm thinking that would.
They're two different locations.
Right, and actually they're on both sides of Lay Valley, so you'd end up, Lay Valley would not have access out of.
Exactly. That's one of the concerns. Plus, we've been making some minor changes to the one on the west side, where it's not nearly as much of a problem. Oh, yeah. It'd have to, yeah, so that there's way in and out.
Nothing here.
All right. Thank you very much. Other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Voting on a motion to approve the stormwater master plan update. Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. On to the next item, the 138th Street project, ATMS agreement for gas line relocation.
Good evening. Frank A. Bart, Public Works Director. This, we hope to be the last and final agreement that we need with the utilities. As far as moving utilities, we've had discussions with council before about the cost and about what was anticipated with ATMS in this particular project. They have a private easement, and it's been determined that about approximately 76.3% of this project is going to be impacted on that private easement. And so an agreement has been reached with them that we would be compensating them for approximately 76.3% of the total cost of their utility movement on this project, in the amount of $495,387.74. And because of the way the agreement reads, there may be a little bit more or a little bit less from that particular amount, because when this is all said and done, and all the costs are finalized and tallied, that's when the final amount will actually be realized. But we're pretty certain that it's going to be in this particular amount at this point. This is part of the project costs. Beyond that, I will entertain any questions as best I can.
Very good. Thank you. Any other staff input?
I will add that the franchise agreement that covers this, if we did want to make any changes, we would need to have something in front of you at the next council meeting. So if that's something you'd like staff to work on, then we're happy to do that. And it would adjust the franchise fee cost.
Any other staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with ATMS for gas line relocation on 138th Street in the amount of $495,387.74.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mrs. Gurley. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start right here. Ma'am, sir, ma'am?
I'm trying to wrap my head around this, Frank. Are they relocating, because if I understand correctly, there's an easement on both sides of 138th Street, and they're relocating to use just one side, correct?
That's correct.
And they're relocating it to the west side?
Yes. Yes.
Can you give a little bit more in-depth history explanation of private easement and what's actually happening there?
Sure. ATMS acquired this from some other company, and I don't remember off the top of my head who it was. It was either the previous gas company or the gas company even previous to that. Somewhere back there, they purchased a private easement along there. And it, of course, we're talking decades ago, so it's a little bit difficult to exactly identify where that easement is, but it's clear enough that we know that it's part of the project. It's within the boundaries of the project. And we can identify that roughly 25% of it isn't impacted by the project. So that's where the split came. But there was a private easement purchase decades earlier, and that just went with the ownership of the gas companies that, as they purchased or took over.
At the time, the city didn't have the right-of-way or own the private.
This was previous, yes, and it was actually outside of that, because we can prove that we had some right-of-way based upon the section line. There was a word I was looking for. But the private easement even goes beyond that and crosses over that. So we certainly believe there's some conflict there. There's different opinions, of course.
Yeah.
But.
Half a million dollar difference of it being.
At least, yeah. But, on the other hand, if you want the project to move forward, time is kind of of the essence, and there's over $3 million in grant money that we either need to use or lose.
Now, when they're relocating, they're relocating to the west side, which will then be within.
They, they also have part, yeah, it's still going to be within their private easement. Yes.
There's a private easement on both sides.
Yes.
But we could, if we ever, well, hopefully we never have to go through this again, but if we have.
We hope we never have to again. We hope that we're locating this in a place and in a way that we never have to do this again, but never's a long time.
It will be far outside, this easement is far outside our right-of-way?
No, it'll be pretty much right on that right-of-way.
But outside of the area, our right-of-way?
It will be just barely outside of it, but if you ever have to make an improvement that would have to widen for any reason again, you're going to be back in the same boat. I can't fathom that happening anytime soon, just because of the excavation and the fills and things that would have to take place there. The cost of such a thing would be very high. It's pretty high right now.
Did you go down that way?
Uh, no, I was going this way. I'm sorry.
So I take it, the $495,000, that's for actual construction costs. Is that right?
For relocation of the gas line, yes.
Okay.
That would be our portion
Yes.
of the relocation of the gas line.
Anyone else down here? Nope. Please.
I had two pop up. Does this have to be done prior to any other piece of the construction? Is this the next step?
Yeah. We have to have an agreement, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. We have to have an agreement for all of the relocations signed and certified to KDOT before we can move any further with the project.
But the actual relocation will be, will that be done before other sections of groundbreaking will be done?
I'm told that relocation is probably going to happen this year.
And does the same issue exist from Morse to Kansas Avenue?
That I'm not aware. I'm not sure.
And if it does, is it in our best interest to have staff look into that agreement to see if we can make changes so we're not in this, over this barrel going north?
I don't know if I can speak to that or not.
Right now, this agreement sets any future relocation costs at the same cost, the 76.3%.
For this, for this stuff, yeah. But she's talking about.
Future. We could have the city attorney take a look at it. He was involved in this attempted negotiation, but. Knowing that we've got the next two phases of this project ahead of us, I feel like it's in our best interest to get out from under this boulder. Yeah, we can, we can take a look at it. I, I know that the subdivision here is part of why there's this private easement here. I don't think we're dealing with that from Morse to Metro, but we can take a, we can take a look at it and have the attorney take a look at it.
And certainly there'd be more of an emphasis about if something like that did exist, doing everything we can to make our design avoid it. It may be less expensive to acquire additional right-of-way or easement or something on the other side of the road, rather than have to pay a fee to have them relocate their utilities.
Is this standard that they're in private easement? Is this standard that they're in private easements?
No.
So this is a rare occurrence?
Yes. Although it's becoming more and more common, I know of water districts that would buy their own. As long as twenty years ago, I remember, we'd come along, want to do roadwork and you just assume a lot of the time that, hey, if they're in, if they're not in a private easement, they have to move at their expense and I've been surprised before. But it seems kind of rare to me.
Okay. Yet other? No?
So for everyone that likes to see their money at work, on a schedule, do you know when potentially this can take place for removing the lines?
I'll call you when it starts.
Yeah, I was going to say, the relocation, we hope to be taking place as soon as we get a signed agreement and they get themselves together. They have indicated to us that it, it could happen in the next two to three months.
This is one of the first phases, is that correct?
Yes. And we have to have a signed agreement and a certification as such to KDOT before the work, the roadway can be bid. They won't bid it until this is done. And of course, as I indicated before, the balance of.
Might mention that most of the other utilities out there are being relocated as we speak.
Oh, yes.
So it's just the gas.
Telephone, they're, they may even be done.
I need to get to the other side of town.
Anything else? Sir? Other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Atmos for gas line relocation on 138th Street in the amount of four hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents. Long?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Painfully, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Very good. On to the next item, which is the resolution authorizing an automatic aid agreement between the City of Bonners Springs Fire Department and the Fairmont Township Fire Department. Chief?
Mayor and Council, Tim Richards, Fire Chief, as the mayor just mentioned, come before you to request approval for me to sign an agreement between our two agencies. Right now, we have a mutual aid agreement with them, which requires, once we've responded, one of our units to request our dispatcher to contact their dispatcher to get a unit heading this way. This just automates that whole process, saving sometimes four to six minutes, which as you all know, whether it's a medical call or a structural fire or any type of emergency, those four to six minutes are pretty key. Stand for any questions.
Very good. Any other staff input? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion, make a motion to adopt a resumption of automatic aid agreement between City of Bonners Springs Fire Department and the Fairmont Township Fire Department.
Second. Moved by Mr. Reeves and seconded by Mr. Shannon and we'll start right here, sir.
No questions.
Nothing, ma'am?
No questions.
Chief, are we, I think it's pretty obvious, but are we now really expanding with more mutual aid than we've seen in previous years? I know you weren't here then, but I think it's great.
Yeah, my understanding, we've had a long, longstanding auto aid with the City of Edwardsville. If there's a structural fire today, we have, get our engine and our ambulance and an engine fire truck from Edwardsville. This will be expanding that, adding Fairmont.
Now, is Fairmont all volunteer?
No, they're, they're paid and part-time paid, just like.
Okay, and they come out of?
Just right there by base or city hall. They're just right next to there.
Great. And what, what situations would that happen?
On structural fires.
Around the whole city of Bonners Springs?
That's correct.
So even if it was in, say, Lake of the Forest?
Yep.
Where we're having, automatically having Edwardsville come, they would also automatically be coming?
That's correct. And then, as, as indicated in our agreement, there's some addresses there that talk about where we would respond, reciprocating those services for structure fires, vehicle accidents with extrication and grass fires. We, of course, wouldn't be covering their entire district because their district's very large.
But they'd be covering our whole district?
Correct.
And if necessary, you call those off?
Oh, yeah. We would do that even with Edwardsville. If we were to go on scene with our first report or size-up is what we call it, being nothing showing, we would usually release all the other units.
Very good.
I'm gathering that they have agreements with other districts.
Yes.
Since we're only doing part of their, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do they have more calls than we do or do we run a risk of running too lean to respond within our own city limits if we're on a mutual aid call with?
We, we always do run that risk, but we're, you know, we're, we're developing a program where if we do, if our units are tied up, we're going to have people, our off-duty folks coming in off-duty to cover other engines and the other ambulance. So that's how we're kind of handling that.
I was going to say, I noticed that there's three different definitions in there for the types of calls.
Right.
With different defined response areas.
Right.
So I'm curious why the difference in response areas.
That was, as we volleyed this back and forth, that was what they wanted to do. I'm not super familiar with their district or their area, but I asked that they respond in our entire city and they just wanted us. But as Ms. Wood mentioned, they do have, they have auto mutual and auto aid agreements with KCK and with Leavenworth and, and other departments that are probably covering those other parts of their district.
Well, the one I want, did want to ask specifically about is the motor vehicle collision with extraction, extrication.
Right.
The defined area on number two for us, it says inside the Fairmont Town Fire District jurisdictional limit, south of Kansas Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
But their jurisdiction, does it run south of Kansas Avenue?
Yes.
That's, how far out then are we talking? Because I was going to say, because we're talking within the city limits of Bonner, we go all the way to State Avenue to 142nd Street. So are we talking?
Including Kansas Avenue east of 158.
From County 2 to 142nd Street.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out. So, nothing in, up north of State Avenue?
That's correct. I think they have KCK coming out of KCK's Piper Station.
So we're basically helping strictly on the west side.
Exactly.
For extrication, okay. That explains a little more. I was trying to interpret that and trying to understand the boundary areas.
And we didn't really get into that much. I defined what we, we were asking of them and they defined what they were asking from us and it felt reasonable to our staff and.
No negotiations, just this is what each area needs and that was how you satisfied those wants.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Voting on a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing an automatic aid agreement between the City of Bonners Springs Fire Department and the Fairmont Township Fire Department. Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. What mutual aid agreements do we have?
We have one with all of the Leavenworth County Fire Chiefs Association and Bonners Springs Fire. We're part of a big mutual aid deal that was signed back in the early nineties, I believe. And then we have mutual aid and auto aid with Edwardsville and that would be it. I most likely will be coming back to the council at some point and adding more to a defined building fire, which we would consider anything bigger than a duplex. And we probably would either add KCK automatically on that or a unit from Shawnee on that.
I can see how that would benefit us and their areas also. Very good, thank you. Nothing else? On to item number five, a fire rescue extrication tool set purchase, sir.
Tim Richards, Fire Chief, just come before you to request permission to spend not in excess of forty-five thousand dollars on a planned purchase in the 2023 budget of an extrication tool package that's battery-powered extrication equipment. We've included a lot of material for you in your review, so I don't know if you'll have many questions about that. It is, we have a twenty-year-old system that we are going to retire and most likely put on Purple Wave to auction off to another department or anybody else that would want to buy it. So we will have this one as our primary set and then we have a Genesis brand extrication equipment that is, I believe, ten to twelve years old that would be a backup set for us.
Very good. Other staff? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase of an extrication tool set from Conrad Fire Equipment in the amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Woods. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here.
Down here, yeah. Always important to have tools to work with when you ride up on the scenes.
What is the expected lifespan of this new tool set?
I would, they're telling us ten to fifteen years. I think that the battery technology is really, really good and we feel very confident with that. But as you know, with all the lithium battery things going on, we're being told that it's going to be ten to fifteen years and the best thing we can do is just accept their word for that.
Thank you.
But this brand that we're going with, Homatro, has a very longstanding history in hydraulic and electric extrication.
Will it require any additional training or is it similar enough?
We're, we're going to get additional training with it, but it's, it's largely the tasks and tactics that we use are the same. It's just the power supply is, instead of hydraulic, it's electric through batteries.
Thank you.
Seems like a valuable implement.
And they mentioned they can be used underwater?
Yeah.
That's counterintuitive to me.
Right, yeah, I don't know that I'd want to use electric.
Yeah.
Every day.
Right.
No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to approve the purchase of an extrication tool set from Conrad Fire Equipment in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. Gurley?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good, congratulations, thank you. On to number six, fitness court installation contractor selection.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. Before you tonight is the request to approve EIS as our install, or our installer for the fitness court. They're at Center Park. We received two quotes. Both of these vendors are the two preferred vendors by the National Fitness Campaign. They're very familiar with the installation of the equipment. Very fast turnaround for both of them. No real difference between their proposals. I think one company wanted access to electric. But the reason why we chose to go with EIS is because that is what the, that is who the county used for both of their fitness court installations and they were very happy with how they worked and everything. Both vendors were available on our preferred date for start date. So hopefully, pending approval tonight, we can start the installation July 31st.
Very good. Any other staff input? Citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to authorize the Assistant City Manager, excuse me, to accept the quote from the Engineered Installation Solutions, EIS, for the installation of fitness court equipment in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Ms. Long. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start down here with you, sir. What's the expected completion date, do you know?
They said about a week pending weather, but they've been known to get it done in three days.
Nice. That's, that's pretty good.
They do a lot of these, yeah.
I'm glad to see that getting along.
Completion date will be the same as the time when it opens to the public?
It'll be available to the public once it's complete and we'll announce a official ribbon cutting after we get that set internally.
Thank you.
Very good. No other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to authorize the Assistant City Manager to accept the quote from Engineered Installation Solutions for the installation of the fitness court equipment in the amount of twenty-five thousand. Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you. On to item number seven, an ordinance to amend the city's pay plan.
Amber Vogon, Assistant City Manager. We have before you an ordinance to amend our pay plan. There aren't a lot of changes. The, the only one really that we have reflected on there is the change of the police corporal position to a detective position. We no longer have any corporals as part of the police organizational structure that they presented earlier this year in a workshop. This is that next step to get the detective position put on the pay scale so that when they get to that point, they can open it for applications. And the, the items that Frank presented, they're already part of the pay scale, so we didn't need to make changes there.
Very good. Other staff? Citizens, questions, concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Where are we? Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the city's pay plan.
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Gurley and seconded by Mrs. Woods. Questions, concerns, comments, and we'll start right here.
I think it's a good idea.
Nothing here.
Sir? Nothing. Seeing none, no other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Voting on a motion to adopt an ordinance to amend the city's pay plan. Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. That leads us to the reports for this evening and the first of which, the city managers' report.
The only thing I wanted to highlight was the grant that we had that we've been awarded from the Kansas Creative Arts Industries Commission. We received a nine thousand five hundred dollar grant from them for two murals downtown, murals, but we're planning on using that for two downtown. And Megan Gililand is going to start the process to start getting some stakeholders involved and get a call for artists out and get moving on that. So hopefully we'll see some new art downtown.
Very good. Nothing else to add? Oh, go move into city council items and we'll start, I think I picked on everyone equally, so we'll start down here with Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, I want to thank staff for their job in spraying along Spredon Creek. They did that this year without having to do a lot of prodding on that to get that done, so I'm happy about that. So are the residents out there. Also, is there any plans for more improvements toward a green area or whatever on the building that was torn down? Anybody know anything about that?
The old grocery store?
Yes.
The, where the grocery store was torn down, the city partnered with that developer to submit an application for moderate income housing. So they proposed a hundred apartments there. And we should find out more on whether or not that was awarded in August. But they have moved forward with the planning. But they have moved forward with the planning process on that.
People seem to be interested in that, so.
Just real quick, I'd like to go back to what Mr. Mack, you talked about earlier, because I had brought that up to staff some time back about trying to watch our council meetings online, and they are very difficult to hear. And I know there were some issues, I think, the way the pickups work on that. Has there been any more investigative work to see if there's a way we can change the way those recordings pick up the audio?
We have had the IT company that installed the sound system, they have come back out and looked at it. They have the mics turned up as high as they can go without providing feedback. But really, these, sorry, these microphones are meant to pick up within just a couple of inches from the mic, so we may need to look at having.
Or doing hand tell.
Yes, taller, taller mics installed or something. We'll look and see.
But that's mainly the problem, is the distance.
Yeah. Nothing.
We'll have to make sure we talk right into the microphone.
I agree. I watched the other night, Gina and I did, and we enjoyed, I missed a meeting, so we got a chance to watch it. And I noticed the same thing. I think this thing is primarily just getting a little bit closer, even when those that are standing up there, they need to do it. Frank, he's not here. Get a little closer. So I think that's just it. And one other thing, this is interesting, I'm going to bring this up, with the pool and the sound system. I remember taking our kids up there when the pool was young, you know, new, and the kids were younger. Seems like one of the speakers was kind of muffled, and I'm like, wow, that's, you know, that's, we listened, but it was just, you know, just kind of grimace to it. And now that, it's my understanding, that speaker, I don't think's ever been fixed. And so I don't know what we need to do, but if we need a new speaker up at the pool, because I know we get a lot of people to come in and enjoy it, listen to quality music, right, over a nice. We wouldn't want to have a party with a busted speaker at our house, right? And so we have pool parties every day, it seems like. So I'm just bringing that up. Quality sound.
They need some attention. I know the PA speaker that they announced the races with, when they called the swimmers to their marks, can be heard across the valley. I.
It's the little things.
Makes me feel like jumping in.
That's right. It's the little things, guys. That's it.
Swimmers to your marks? Give Nathan what for, I appreciate it.
Nathan, bring that to Nathan's attention.
Ma'am?
I'll just remind everybody that the second evenings on Oak will be this Thursday, downtown on Oak Street. Last month, we saw about seven to eight hundred people. Downtown was really alive. It was super exciting, so we're looking forward to seeing how this one goes. So I hope to see each and every one of you there.
That's in order.
It's interesting, and I agree with the sound system. But I just mentioned to Chris, I said, if they made these a lot longer, then we could sit back here. Exactly. No, no, that would, I think that would help because it's, you know, I'm, I'm standing up right now, and I'm still having to lean, no, I'm still having to lean forward.
Nothing else? I appreciate all those comments, and, and those are things that are growing pains. We have to take special attention to those kind of things as we're getting used to these relatively new council chambers. It's a lot different than meeting on folding tables in the old gymnasiums. So we need to make every effort to make this as easy for others to follow along as possible. And one of the learning ways to do that is, like you mentioned, taking an opportunity to watch the proceedings on, online, and that'll help a lot. Also, I try and make sure that we recognize who makes the motions and who makes the seconds. And please, we should probably also make sure we, like the staff, makes a point to introduce themselves every single time. Even when they have multiple issues that they have to address, we should make mention of who we are. They may not pick up on that online and/or in streaming other services. So please, if, I know it's a, a big ask because it's, it's not natural, but those are things that we might want to take an opportunity to concern ourselves with. Also, thank you for mentioning Festival on Oak. I really, the last one in June was a big success, and this one in July hopefully will be even bigger. And it's coming up this Thursday night. They start at about five o'clock on Oak with vendors and food trucks, and it continues with the city band concert at eight-thirty, and you're all welcome to attend. We, we have room for the seven of you, as well as all the council members, to come to the city council, or I'm sorry, the city band. I can promise you the, the best city band music you will hear anywhere. And I may be partial, but I'll, I'll throw down, I'll say ours is the best, and the absolute worst jokes in between the songs. Which it doesn't, it's, it's not very hard to do that. It's very hard.
So can we text you some jokes or something like that, or you?
You, you're welcome to. My memory seems to be about this long. I was given one right before I walked on and missed it. But I have received them, some of the best laughs from council people's jokes. Thank you very much, Mrs. Woods.
Just to add to your thought.
We have, we have three more city band concerts on Thursday nights through June at eight-thirty.
July.
I'm sorry, in July, through the end of July, and then one also during Thiblo Days. So you have four opportunities left. The city market will continue through the end of October?
Middle.
Middle of October, thereabouts, basically when the vegetables run out, I think. But they usually always have a lot of great activities at the farmer's market on Saturday, too, so please encourage you and all your neighbors to attend that. It was brought up earlier this evening about the franchise fees, and we've kind of touched base on that. We don't have a lot of leverage with our utility companies that choose to do business in Bonner Springs. I'm sorry, private utility companies that choose to do business in Bonner Springs. And what we do charge them is a franchise fee, and that's about five percent, as I understand it. And that five percent goes straight into the general fund, and that five percent is five percent of their gross, or it's, that would be like a tax, or of what they bill monthly, or what they bill per year, or?
Yeah, I think it's five percent of, of the customers' billings.
Is that correct? So a gas company, whatever they bill out over the year, five percent of that comes to us. So it's not a payment in lieu of tax, but it would be considered they're paying a fee to the city for doing business here in Bonner Springs. And that's what you're considering going, adjusting. So the gas company, the cable companies, the phone companies that do work in our right-of-way pay that?
Yes, we have franchise agreements with several companies, just to name a few. I know Verizon has one. Evergy Gas, Telephone, and right now, I believe they're all at five percent.
My first question is, is that standard across the other communities of our size and area?
I think five percent's pretty standard. I think we can go up to seven, is it? Yeah.
That was one of my first questions. Expense-wise, it wouldn't cost us any more than the investigation of that. And we might consider what the surrounding communities are charging and to whom all they're charging. This is different than the cellular towers. They pay an additional fund, an additional fee to, or lease to have a cell tower on city property, so that's above and beyond that. And that company would provide that. Do co-locations on that also pay the city, or just the people who put in the tower?
Other companies that add. Yeah, on the cell towers, if they sublet out, then their rate goes up to compensate for that.
Okay, thank you. So that's a yearly fee or agreement. And I can't think unless anybody else has any areas that might be overlooked as far as a franchise fee for private companies to operate in the right-of-way of Bonner Springs. You might make sure that we're not missing anything, that our area, our neighbors are benefiting from. And I don't have any direction on to the amount, but it would be, I would hope it's appropriate or similar to other communities. Unless anyone has any other concerns about franchise fees, yes, please?
Oh, not franchise fees.
No, no. Anything else, sir?
Well, I was just going to mention on the Thursday evening on Oak, you forgot one thing. It's our advertised tonight, which was popsicles with police officers. Also going to be taking place on Thursday evening.
Oh, that's great. Cops with pops. Sounds great. That's, there's always something coming up, so. Other than that, that's all the, the excitement I have to bring, unless anyone has any questions for me. Citizens? Seeing none, thank you all for coming. We're adjourned.